Back to all, the committees have completed their business. Recession has ended. Board is reconvening. Ms. Griffin, posterior, would you please call the room?
Mr. Sarnes.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Dampf.
Here.
Ms. Aguilera.
Here.
Mr. Armenter.
Here.
Ms. Aronson.
Here.
Mr. Blossman.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Mallett.
Here.
Mr. Morris. Mr. Morrow.
Here.
Mr. Temple.
Here.
Ms. Warner.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Woods.
Here.
Mrs. Bushlock.
Here.
The chairman, there's a call.
Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Griffin. The next item on the agenda is our Sexual Trauma and Awareness Training. We have representatives from STAR here. Part of our continuing obligation to build the model reporting and treatment program that we're seeking to treat and in compliance with the mandates upon us by the state. We're doing our Title IX training. And the group from the Sexual Trauma and Recovery, which we refer to as STAR, are here. And ladies, thank you very much. Would you introduce yourself?
Yes. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for having us. My name is Rebecca Marchafava. I am the Training and Technical Assistance Director for STAR. And I've held quite a few different roles at STAR over the past nine years. So I'm very glad to be here and look forward to the presentation and your questions.
Good morning. My name is Tanya Rawl, and I am the Vice President of Social Change at STAR. I'm actually new to STAR but, and returning back to Louisiana after 13 years away. And before this, I was a professor at both University of California Riverside and Franklin and Marshall College.
Can we begin?
Thank you very much. This is the portion where we participate in the training, so turn it over to you for our training.
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear.
I'll turn it over to you for our training.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much. So Tanya and I are going to be sort of switching off as we go over various topics. And just to give you an overview of our agenda today, to see what topics we will be covering, we will be giving you sort of an introduction to today's training and to the topics of, you know, what brings us here, and the topic of culture change on college campuses to prevent sexual violence. We're also going to be, of course, addressing Title IX and LSU's policy on, and related to Title IX and power-based violence. We'll be covering mandated reporting in detail, in alignment with LSU's policy and federal law. Then we will be giving an overview of power-based violence, what that consists of, and examples of that, so that it can be identified as this relates to mandated reporting obligations. And we'll be looking at a continuum of power-based violence, as well as impacts of power-based violence on individuals and communities, including the LSU community. And then we'll have some time, a little bit of time for closing and Q and A. However, I do welcome you to ask questions as we're going through. We recognize that, you know, 90 minutes is a long time to be able to present to the Board of Supervisors. At the same time, there is a lot of content that connects to these topics. But again, I do encourage you to ask questions as we go. Oh, little lag, just kind of. So many of you may have heard of STAR already, but just to give you an overview of what STAR is, it does stand for Sexual Trauma Awareness and Response. We're a nonprofit organization that, and our mission is to provide support to survivors of sexual trauma, improve systems response to sexual trauma and sexual violence, and create social change to ultimately end sexual violence. We do strongly believe that sexual violence is preventable, and it's something that we can come together to end. A little bit about our history. We originated out of the East Baton Rouge Parish District Attorney's Office in 1975 and operated as a department or division of that office until 2011. In 2012, we incorporated into a nonprofit, and our name transitioned from the East Baton Rouge Parish Rape Crisis Center to STAR. The purpose of this shift to incorporate as a nonprofit was to be able to ensure more services for survivors, greater confidentiality of services, and to expand funding sources for the work that we do. So that's just a little bit about our history. Over the last nine years, almost 10 years of being a nonprofit, we have expanded a great deal. We started out with three employees at the very beginning as a nonprofit. We now have over 50 employees, including full and part-time employees. And we have branches in three different cities in Louisiana that serve three different regions. So we have an office, which is our sort of home-based branch here in Baton Rouge, serving the Capital Area region. We have an office in New Orleans, serving the Greater New Orleans area. And we have an office in Alexandria, serving the Central Louisiana region. So we've gone through a great deal of development and growth over the last decade. Wait for it to advance. Okay. So just to let you know about the services that we offer, we have sort of two overarching divisions at STAR in terms of our services. One is survivor services, and one is our social change services, which Tanya leads. So as far as our support services for survivors, and this covers both what we call primary and secondary survivors, that's individuals who've directly experienced sexual violence, as well as their family members or loved ones who have also been impacted. So for these individuals, and, you know, more comprehensively for primary survivors, we offer advocacy services. So if an individual contacts STAR to request services for an experience that has caused sexual trauma or experience of sexual violence, they will connect first with our advocates in our advocacy program. And so intake would be conducted, their needs would be assessed, and our advocates will identify, you know, what needs are they coming in with, and how can they connect them with other resources within STAR or in the community. Our advocates also provide what's called accompaniment for survivors. That can be accompaniment to the hospital when a survivor is getting a forensic exam. It can also be accompaniment to criminal justice proceedings or other types of institutional proceedings. And survivors do have a right to a sexual assault victim advocate in these types of proceedings. We also offer counseling services. These counseling services include individual and group therapy services. And we also offer legal representation and consultation for survivors. So we have a legal program. It's actually one of, the only of its kind in the country, essentially. It's incredibly unique to have access to a program like this in our community. So we are proud of all of our programs, but we particularly recognize that survivors across this country are underserved in terms of getting their legal needs met and having their rights protected through legal representation. And I do just want to make a note that all of these services for survivors are provided at no cost to them. So these are all free services, and they're also confidential. We are bound by federal law to have high levels of, maintain high levels of confidentiality, and that's something we take very seriously at STAR. On the social change side of things, we recognize that really, you know, we need to be there for survivors because sexual violence is still occurring. But at the same time, as we already mentioned, another part of our mission is to impact systems response and create social change to ultimately end sexual violence. And so to that end, we offer prevention education to, for youth. So, you know, this is something that's focusing on healthy relationship skills, healthy dating, and bystander behaviors. We also have more recently expanded our training and technical assistance services. So we have long provided a robust set of trainings to the community. We typically provide and try to do very interactive, engaging trainings to be able to better educate the community and empower the community to understand these issues and be able to take action in positive ways. And so, over the past year, we've also expanded our technical assistance services. And so through these services, we recognize that, again, you know, we look at sexual violence and recognize that this is a community issue. So it's not an issue that just one organization, one nonprofit, can solve on its own. So we do seek to partner with institutions, organizations, companies in our community to facilitate and support institutional and cultural change that will create conditions where violence is less likely to occur in the first place. And also where institutions are supported in their response to the violence when it does occur. So these technical assistance services include things like policy and procedure audits and reviews, policy development, climate and culture assessments, and just general coaching and support for leaders who are navigating challenges related to this and related issues. At this point, I do want to share or talk a little bit about the relationship between LSU and STAR. As I mentioned, STAR has its roots in the Baton Rouge community, but we also have a presence in other areas of the state. As far as this main LSU campus, we have had a longstanding relationship in terms of collaboration with the LSU Lighthouse Program, the LSU Women's Center, to be present, to conduct outreach to students, and provide education as requested by various faculty members, departments, et cetera. In addition to our presence on campus, we have consistently served LSU students over the years. And just this year alone, we have served 43 students from LSU system campuses thus far this year. Since the beginning of 2017, we've served 175 students from LSU system campuses. So I just want to acknowledge this connection that has, has long existed between the institution of LSU and the organization of STAR. Especially in the past year, and I talked about this a little bit, but specifically as it relates to LSU. In the past year, we have been fortunate enough to have contracts with various departments at LSU to engage in some of this training and technical assistance work. So again, with a focus on prevention, but also on the, on the needed response, we have contracted with various LSU departments to develop and provide training, conduct culture and climate assessments, and provide other forms of coaching and technical assistance. We're working pretty closely with Jane Cassidy at this point, meeting regularly with her, talking through challenges that she's encountering, and we are grateful to, to be able to partner in that way. We've also specifically partnered with the Athletics Department and are grateful for that partnership as well. I do want to acknowledge that some of the things we're going to be talking, talking about today, because of the nature of the topic of power-based violence, it can evoke a range of emotions, and it may have an impact on you at some point. I think a lot of times when we come to these institutional conversations, we may forget that there are individuals in the room who are primary survivors, secondary survivors, or just have been otherwise personally impacted by these forms of violence. So I want to acknowledge that, recognize that there may be uncomfortable emotions that arise from this. If it reaches a level that feels intolerable, it may indicate that some support is needed, right? And so I do encourage you to think about the resources that exist in our community, which we are going to talk a little bit more about, not just from this institutional level, but from a personal level. So why are we here? Why were we invited to present? As was already alluded to or referenced, this is training that is mandated by the Louisiana Legislature. And what we did for the content of this training for the Board of Supervisors is we wanted it to be consistent with the information presented to LSU employees in the new online training that we developed in partnership with Jane Cassidy's office and LSU online education. So we wanted it to be consistent, and a lot of the content we're going to be going over today is from that training. However, we didn't even in 90 minutes have time to go over all of that information, so we had to identify what was the highest priority for you all in terms of content. And we also wanted to tailor this a little bit more to your specific roles, given your specific responsibilities. And there will be a sign, or a form that you will be asked to sign at the end of this training acknowledging that you understand your role as a mandated reporter. And that's also something that is needed in terms of showing compliance with law. So at this point, I do want to ground us in just some guiding principles that relate to culture change. And when we talk about culture change, again, what I'm talking about is how do we shift our culture to create conditions where violence is less likely to occur in the first place? And one of the ways that we look at culture change from STAR's perspective is shifting from a culture of compliance to a culture of meaningful prevention and culture change. So this means there may be boxes to check, but that's not where the work ends. And so looking at, you know, recommendations from Hush Blackwell that are implemented, it's incredibly important that those things are implemented, and I know the university is working on that. That is not the be-all, end-all. There will continue to be work that needs to be done, reflection that needs to be done. So just shifting from that compliance mindset to a prevention mindset. One other thing that we often talk about is a shift, and this really, you know, is just for, for everyone, I think, for our entire culture and society. A lot of times when we talk about prevention, people automatically think, how do we permit, how do we prevent victimization, right? How do we teach potential victims not to become victims? At STAR, when we're talking about prevention, we are talking about preventing perpetration. And so that really does require a shift in our language, in our operations, and just in general how we communicate about and address this issue in terms of preventing violence. So preventing perpetration, not victimization. We also know that you all have a responsibility to protect the brand, protect LSU's brand. And one of the things that we advocate for when considering protecting the brand is shifting from just that language to understand that protecting safety of the members of this institution, of the community, LSU community members, is part of protecting the brand. And one of this, this ties to the Hush Blackwell Report. And so one of the statements from that report was that the workarounds employed by the university to try to control narratives or protect the brand have served the university community poorly. And so, again, we just recognize that we advocate for this to be an ongoing conversation in terms of the connection, and recognizing that effectively protecting LSU's brand requires creating a safe environment and protecting survivors after violence has occurred in accordance with their rights. And then the final guiding principle for culture change that I want to talk about today is a shift from institutional betrayal to institutional courage. What do we mean by these terms? So just some brief definitions of terms. Institutional betrayal can be broadly defined as when an institution causes harm to people who depend on it. And one of the things we'll talk about later is individuals' connections with an institution. I mean, I can say personally, I grew up in Baton Rouge. My mother worked at LSU for over 35 years. I was essentially raised on this campus. My dad was a huge LSU football fan. I grew up to be one as well. I have a great deal of connection to this university. And this isn't to make it about me, but a lot of times when people experience sexual violence, and then they do not receive the support that is guaranteed to them, or supposed to be guaranteed to them by law, it can cause, it can cause trauma that is related to this institutional betrayal. So it's not just that act of violence itself, but how the institution responds has a great impact on the type of trauma, the intensity of trauma, and the impacts of that trauma. And so we'll talk a little bit later, more about the disconnection that can occur from that. But what we want is for LSU and LSU's leadership to embody institutional courage. And so this can be defined as an institution's commitment to seek the truth and engage in moral action despite unpleasantness, risk, and short-term cost. It's a pledge to protect and care for those who depend on the institution, and it is a force that transforms institutions into more accountable, equitable, and effective places for everyone. The source of these definitions comes from the Center for Institutional Courage, which was founded by Dr. Jennifer Frade. She is a professor, I believe formerly of the University of Oregon, though, don't quote me on that. But Dr. Frade was actually invited by the LSU Ethics Institute earlier this year to give a keynote address at their annual conference. And that keynote address is available on the LSU Ethics Institute website. And it's very enlightening and illuminating. It was for me. And so it dives deeper into these concepts of institutional courage, which her research has led her to. And it's important to note that the research that led her to these concepts was research specifically on college campuses' responses to sexual violence. So it's definitely relevant to the conversation. And so what we would ask you to consider is that modeling and embodying institutional courage is key to promoting the best interests of the university. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Tanya to lead the next section.
Good morning. So I am going to provide an overview of Title IX and PM 73 and the relationship between the two. So PM 73, which is designed to prohibit power-based violence, applies to all members of the university community. This includes faculty, staff, students, volunteers, organizations, and any other affiliate that participates in activities associated with LSU. So one question that might come from this is what is power-based violence? And I think PM 73 lays it out very well and defines power-based violence as any form of interpersonal violence that controls or intimidates another person through the assertion of power over that person. So that can be physical power, that can be economic power, that can be social power. And we will, in a minute, just go over the range of activities that might be associated with LSU in which this would apply. So again, going over PM 73, which strongly reflects Title IX. It applies to harassment and discrimination on the basis of sex, gender, gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation. So there's two concepts here that we want to just clarify for you. What is discrimination versus what is harassment? So discrimination are behaviors and actions that deny or limit a person's ability to fully benefit from or participate in educational programs because of the person's perceived sex or gender. Harassment, on the other hand, takes the shape of things like quid pro quo harassment, creating a hostile environment, or retaliation. And we will provide a more comprehensive list in just a minute. So to return to the activities associated with, that might count for, where PM 73 applies, covers conducts that occur here in the course of LSU operations, on campus, or any other university-owned, leased, controlled, or operated location within the bounds of the United States, at any LSU-sponsored event or organizational activity in the United States, whether on or off campus, and where LSU exercises substantial control over the respondent in the context of where or how the alleged incident occurred. So these procedures in which we have PM 73 and how it reflects Title IX, these are required and governed by Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972. To just put that into some perspective, we're reaching the actual 50-year mark of Title IX, which is interesting. It'll be June of next year. And so I kind of invite everyone here to think about the progress we have made in the last 50 years regarding Title IX, and maybe where we want to see it go in the next 50 years. 50 years. But its intention was always to prohibit sex discrimination in any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. So instances of sex or gender-based harassment and discrimination that occur and may not rise to a level of Title IX violation still must be reported. And what we have written, what you have written in PM 73 dictates that any LSU employee except certain confidential advisors are required to report. So the exception would be clergy, HIPAA violators, potential HIPAA violators, and mental health And I want to point out here that alongside mandatory reporting, it should be noted that a reporter is protected by the amnesty policy, which is laid out in PM 73, and will also be protected from retaliation. So those are good things to know if you ever are facing the reporting process. And to kind of give you a list of sex or gender-based harassment and discrimination, we have here a pretty solid list. Obviously, it can go beyond this, but sexual assault, stalking, dating violence, domestic violence, sexual exploitation, retaliation, and harassment related to one sex, gender, gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation. So we did say in the beginning that we would encourage questions throughout, so if anyone has any questions at this time.
I did.
Yes.
I noticed that the jurisdiction appears only to be in the United States.
Yes, I actually noticed that as I was saying, and I believe also for like LSU study abroad, which I did, and I know it does count, so yes.
But study abroad, we have grants that students go to other countries, sometimes in groups of students, student-faculty groups.
Yes.
Is there any, would those instances be covered for those students?
Yes, I believe, and this is based on my personal experience with traveling with LSU abroad, that yes, it is. Like PM 73 applies, Title IX applies. So if you're doing anything abroad, I think you will, yeah, and I think that's kind of shared with the students, too.
And just to add to that, the list that was gone over previously in terms of what the policy covers, it should be viewed as and/or, so it doesn't have to meet all of those criteria, but any. And so the note on, so I think, yeah, if you look at the, I can go back to that list.
Probably in the course of LSU.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. So in the course of LSU operations, yes, anything, anything LSU study abroad, and a conference abroad even, right, for faculty, PM 73 would apply, if a faculty and a grad student went together or something.
Thank you.
Any other questions right now?
I have a question.
Yes.
You said you guys, I guess you're primarily based out of major areas you're based in is in Alexandria and Baton Rouge.
And New Orleans.
And New Orleans. And you have 50-plus in folk who work with you now?
Yes, including full and part-time.
Including what? What'd you say?
Including full and part-time staff members.
Full and part-time. Do you have any shelter-type facilities at all?
So, good question. We do not operate shelters, and one of the obviously forms of violence on this list is domestic violence, dating and domestic violence. And so one other thing to clarify about STAR is we do primarily focus on sexual assault as the primary victimization that we address for individuals. So we do serve individuals who may have survived domestic violence and may have experienced sexual assault within that domestic violence or intimate partner violence context. But we would connect with shelters and we would work in conjunction with domestic violence agencies where appropriate to be able to connect individuals with resources. However, I will say that housing needs of survivors is a huge issue and something that we, you know, recognize there need to be more resources for housing. One of the ways we do support survivors as it relates to housing is assisting with lease termination. So that would be an example of one of the services provided by our legal team. So let's say someone was assaulted in their apartment and they fear for their safety and would like to move, but that involves breaking their lease. We can, we can assist in those cases. And we've actually, our legal director, Morgan Lomondre, was integral in a state law that makes that easier to do. So, yeah, housing can be a major concern, but we do not operate shelters.
You have an active continuum of care strategy in place?
Sure. So typically, what we see when someone comes to us for services is we have expectations for follow-up with those individuals. So we do follow up with them a certain number of times. However, we are accessible to individuals no matter when their assault occurred. So we can, you know, be there for someone immediately after an assault, but also someone could have been abused or assaulted decades ago and come to us for care. So that's one thing to consider. A lot of the clients who come to us and are served by STAR are served by our multiple programs. So they are receiving advocacy services, they're also submitting a legal request to be provided with their legal options, they're also potentially receiving therapy. So we do try to holistically address the needs of survivors as best we can, and then again, connecting them with other resources and providing that ongoing support and advocacy throughout navigating processes, reporting processes, investigation processes, and other, other just navigating processes and institutions.
So this thing started in '75 as an outgrowth from the Department of the, at this point, are you, do you continue to be engaged with the district attorney's components around, around various areas? And do you have a working relationship with, say, LSU's Department of Social Services? Have counselors as well as legal, a legal team?
Sure. So we do continue to work with criminal justice partners in term, and interact with them. And so one of the most direct ways that we do that is having our advocates accompany survivors when they're meeting with a prosecutor, meeting with law enforcement to do an interview, et cetera. So there is that sort of ongoing connection. The East Baton Rouge Parish District Attorney's Office actually provided funding to seed funding for STAR after we incorporated as a nonprofit. And that funding has, has been challenged recently because of budget cuts and things like that. But we have had a longstanding relationship and partnership with the DA's office even after incorporating as a nonprofit. And then we do also, you know, as much as we can, partner with, you know, other social service agencies. Again, this connects back to referrals. I will say, we actually receive a lot of referrals to our counseling services from mental health practitioners in the community who feel ill-equipped to address these issues within their therapy practice. And so one of the needs we actually identify is for, you know, social work and counseling programs to provide more robust training and preparation around this issue because statistics bear out that a large portion of the population is impacted. And so, you know, we need, we need mental health practitioners to, to have that preparation and education and training.
Also, I'd like to clarify the first question. So Title IX legally does not cover study abroad, but LSU policies do. So PM 73 would apply for students or for anyone LSU-affiliated abroad, but Title IX itself does not. So just, sorry, redirect. Thank you for clarifying. Any other questions at this time?
Not, not to get too far in the weeds, but I was just curious overall what your funding sources were. And how much is private donations, state government, federal government, city government, just generally?
So we have a combination of grants and private donor funding as well. The Violence Against Women Federal Fund, which was introduced by Biden in the 90s, you know, does kind of direct a lot of the grants for us. That money is depleting, obviously, so, yeah, we, we have a lot of donations as well that we, we rely on, and we have an earned income stream as well.
In your New Orleans office, are you working with the district attorneys or the criminal courts? Or, I mean, how do you interact with the greater New Orleans community outside of the LSU system?
Sure. So in addition to what I already mentioned about our advocates being present with survivors during these proceedings, we have in the past provided trainings for judges, attorneys, you know, people working in those systems. And I, and I will say, you know, when it comes to our funding, I also want to point out, so for a long time, the majority of our funding has come from federal grants. And some of that is state-passed-through funding, but this is actually the first year we've received any funding from the state legislature, allocated by the state legislature. So sexual assault services have gone unfunded by the state of Louisiana. Domestic violence services are funded, but sexual assault services specifically are not. So funding is a challenge. Our CEO has been quite aggressive with grant writing and, you know, getting us to where we are now. And also, I want to say that the majority of our funding is directed to the survivor support piece. So up until basically this year, we basically had maybe one and a half community prevention educators, you know, so it has been much more difficult to secure funding to support more robust prevention services, but it is a part of our mission and it's something that we prioritize however we can. And that also connects back to the earned income streams that we are trying to develop to support that work.
We all, we all know that funding is, is a real acute set of circumstances for any kind of social service component, and I call it a social service component. But what's, what's your greatest, what's your greatest challenge? Do you, and, and, and where is your base of operation? And who really is your direct, direct director? I mean, how, because I know usually when, when, when social service components, and I'm calling this a social service component, when you have a strategy where you have various, various kinds of fundings that flow in and out, you really can't establish the kind of continuity and consistency in service providing that takes place and is needed. So where do you guys line up related to that? And I, everybody wants to have a 501(c)(3), that's kind of like a catchphrase, it's kind of tricky. It doesn't really give you any real teeth in being able to provide something, just allows you to get by some tax stuff, really. But, so where are you guys really based out of, and where's your headquarters, and who's in charge?
Yeah. I'll start with that, Tanya, you can add in. So our CEO is Rachel Abear. She's actually been the CEO since the inception of STAR. Prior to that, she started out as the volunteer coordinator for the Rape Crisis Center, so she's been in this work for, for a while now. And, and so, yes, she's based in Baton Rouge and our, most of our administration is based in Baton Rouge. However, with the shift recently due to the pandemic to more virtual and remote work models, we have been able to shift our structure a bit to not be so branch-focused, but be able to support the teams working in different branches, sort of bringing them more together, uniting them to be able to work more collaboratively. So I don't know if that entirely answers your question. I would say the largest challenge that we have faced is a lack of general funds, a lack of unrestricted funding, because obviously with grant funding, it's highly restricted in terms of what we can spend that on. There is a large administrative burden that comes with the growth we've gone through. However, you know, grants want to focus on direct services and less on supporting the administration, even though it actually takes a lot of work to, to write the grants and, you know, manage the grants and all of that. So we've definitely worked on, you know, wanting to expand and grow our unrestricted funding so that we can have more flexibility to ensure that continuity and maintain the level of our services and continue to, to expand our impact.
You really need a contractual relationship with the Department of Social Services and the Department of, Department of Health, which used to be DHH.
We're working on it.
You got a lobbyist in place?
Can I, can I reframe what's happening here? I really would like to give you an opportunity to finish the training. And I also would like, as you continue your conversation with us, you started your framing with a discussion of prevention and prevention science, and I understand Title IX to be a lot of compliance, and this tension is what is getting everybody in trouble with compliance and reporting clearly have to be executed very well, but the prevention part of this is where my heart is. And so I would hope that in the rest of the framing, wherever possible, you highlight where we can be excellent at prevention. That would be most useful.
It's great to hear you say that. The prevention is the federal focus moving forward as well. So I think that we're all on the same page regarding wanting to be proactive rather than having to get stuck being reactive and falling into those traps that are laid out. So we'll continue with mandated reporting.
Yes. Great. And it looks like we're still on time, amazingly, so thank you for that. So even, even given your statements, which I really do appreciate, and will try to reciprocate with the framing around prevention, the next section is focused specifically on the mandated reporting piece, which is largely compliance-based. However, we can look at this, and I'll just go back before we kind of get into the, the details of what's written on the slides. There's actually a lot of debate and sort of complexity around the topic of mandated reporting when it comes to victim and survivor advocates. And the reason for that is sexual violence is a highly disempowering experience to experience that. And so one of the issues with mandated reporting is that is a decision, so if, if a survivor of sexual violence discloses to someone with the intent of seeking support, but then they're told, oh, actually, I'm a mandated reporter, I have to report this to the Title IX office, that can create a lot of anxiety, additional anxiety, fear, and an additional experience of loss of control over the situation. So it actually is a complex situation, but we are, you know, looking at compliance right now. Oh, and we were asked if we have a policy director. We do have our, the person who's been our legal director for many years, Morgan Lomondre, she is actually switching more into a policy role. So we'll still be able to support the legal program, but focusing more on policy and legislative advocacy, which is work that she's done for many years already in her role as legal director. But one of the concepts that is sort of seen as a, an alternative to mandated reporting But one of the concepts that is sort of seen as an alternative to mandated reporting is the practice of mandated support. So ensuring that when there is a disclosure, support is going to be one of the things we talk about in terms of the part of that mandated reporting response. And so, yeah, so I'm just going to hold that thought and come back to it in a little bit. But what is mandated reporting, just to go over the basics? So all LSU employees, with few exceptions that Tanya mentioned earlier, are required to promptly report instances of sex or gender-based harassment and discrimination. And this again includes the list that we already went over. It is important to note that mandated reporting is required for instances in which the individual is not the victim, but that they're made aware of. There are a few exceptions to that as well, which we'll go over. So people are not mandated to report their own assaults as mandated reporters. Yes.
But I feel like I need to ask a two-part question. This word aware, so directly aware? Or that we heard somebody talking about it in the hall? And if it's the latter, do we have an obligation to try to determine whether this rumor is accurate or not?
So, great question. And we're actually, in the exceptions that we look at, one of the exceptions is just overhearing a conversation in passing. So if you're just overhearing other people talk about something, you are not mandated to report that. And again, this kind of comes back to, you're also not limited by what's mandated, right? So you could go beyond that, but it is not mandated in that case. Do you have another part of the question?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Good question. So yes, members of the Board of Supervisors are included in the group of mandated reporters.
Could you repeat that a little louder, please? So everyone is aware of what you just said?
Sure. Members of the LSU Board of Supervisors are mandated reporters.
No questions, no doubts. We know something, we are required to report it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Except for the, exceptions we'll go over, but yes, thank you. So if you witness these types of misconduct we're talking about, or if you have knowledge of the misconduct happening to or affecting an LSU student or employee, you must promptly report the incident to the Title IX Coordinator. Just to answer a question that you may be thinking about, what does promptly mean? It's my understanding from conversations with Jane Cassidy that when we're talking about promptly, it is a very high priority to report it as soon as possible, ideally the same day that you're made aware of it. So it is something that becomes, you know, a very urgent matter to ensure that you're fulfilling your obligation. And if I'm incorrect, but that is my understanding. There can be serious consequences for not fulfilling this legal obligation. So according to law, employees who are mandated reporters may be terminated if they fail to promptly make a report without good cause, or if they make a report with the intent to harm or deceive knowingly, knowing that the report is false. And what is needed to fulfill this mandated reporter obligation is to file an incident report. So we're going to go over the options for doing that. But an incident report is just an initial report alleging this sex or gender-based harassment or discrimination. So I do also want to say, because I know that in a lot of cases, people may hear things or be told things that they don't automatically believe in that moment, that they find hard to believe. And I want to make clear that believing the report, believing the disclosure is not is not a precursor to filing an incident report. Even if you question it, it is still your mandated reporter obligation to file that incident report. One of the ways that, getting back to this tension between mandated reporting and the complexity of that, an incident report, according to PM 73, does not automatically trigger an investigation. So this is an attempt by the university to not take action immediately outside of the wishes of the person who experienced the violence. So an incident report alerts the Title IX Office of the possible violation. It's a form of documentation, right? The Title IX Office, upon receiving an incident report, will then follow up with the person who is named as the victim, if that information is included, and they will offer resources and information about their options. That includes the option of filing a formal complaint, which would trigger an investigation.
I got a quick question.
Yes.
If you, if the victim doesn't, pardon me, tell you, give you any information other than they tell you they've been harassed or abused or you, obviously, we have to report that to Title IX, but you have no other information to say, look, this lady told me this, she didn't give me her name, didn't give me her number, any of that. Okay, now then I got to file another report? Or tell them Title IX that is enough? What else would I have to put on a report other than this person told me this information? I don't know who they are.
Yeah. So the report, you would basically report what you know, even if it's very limited information.
If that's what I knew when I called the Title IX Office, am I free, am I finished my obligation? Or do I have to do this initial report, another step?
So the incident report itself is the requirement. And you would want your name attached to that report to show formally that you have met your obligation as a mandated reporter. However, when we go over the options for reporting, it does include calling, emailing, visiting the Title IX Office to ask questions like that, right? So if you're in a situation and you're not even sure, do I have to mandate report this, right? That's something that you could contact the Title IX Office to talk to someone about and get clarity on, in this given situation, does this fall under your mandated reporter obligation? Does that make sense?
It does. I just, I think people that would get any information told to them would feel, you know, whether there's rules or not, to go and explain it and do all they can. Then you got to file another report. I don't want to throw cold water on someone trying to give assistance. Why, oh, well, if I don't do all of these steps, even though I'm trying, I'm going to be the one getting fired.
Right, and that's where the training-
And if you don't want people to say, well, I'm just not going to say anything. I don't know any information, I don't know anything other than someone told me something. But then you make a person that received this limited information go through all of these things, and if they miss a step, they're going to be fired. So you don't want this person to say, well, I didn't really get any information, I don't want to say anything.
No, it's an important question, right? And so coming back to, that's why in part of this training, we are trying to encourage, if you have questions, discomfort, uncertainty around, you know, do I submit a report, do I not, encouraging that contact with the Title IX Office to get those questions answered. So we recognize there can be a lot of uncertainty around this. So, yeah, absolutely. I think it's an important question, and I appreciate you asking so that we can clarify it. So coming back to filing an incident report does not automatically trigger an investigation. There may be circumstances where the survivor does not wish for an investigation or a formal complaint to be filed and an investigation to be triggered. But the Title IX Office may determine on its own that the, based on the information that they have, the basically public safety risk is too great to not take action. And so I will identify that as an area that may need to be figured out a little bit more, because the policy is written in a way that's somewhat vague, somewhat broad, and really identifying, you know, what do these instances, what instances would meet that burden in terms of a threat to public safety? And this comes back to, you know, instances of sexual violence where you have an individual who is offending against multiple people, right? And so I think that continues to be one of the challenges in terms of implementing these processes and implementing these policies. So anyway, we're not saying it's easy or very simple, but it is a problem to be figured out and solved, hopefully. So now we're going to get into further addressing some of the questions y'all have raised. When is this obligation specifically, when is it specifically an obligation that you have to meet? So mandated reporters must file an incident report with the Title IX Office if someone directly discloses to you that they experienced a form of sex or gender-based harassment and discrimination, if you witness any sex or gender-based harassment and discrimination, or if someone tells you about an LSU student or employee who experienced one or more of these forms of harassment or discrimination. So if someone discloses directly to you, if you witness it, or if someone tells you about it. So what are the exceptions to the obligation? When are you not obligated by law to report this or by policy? You're not obligated if, again, you yourself experienced a discrimination or harassment. You're not obligated if the disclosure occurred during a public awareness event. So that could be a Take Back the Night event, vigils, protests, speak-outs, or other public forums where individuals may disclose experiences of power-based violence. You are not obligated to report if the disclosure occurs, and again, this may not directly impact all of you, but in the course of academic work. So if someone were to disclose in an essay in some form of assignment that they were given, it's not mandated that people report. Again, they could if they chose to, but it is not mandated. And again, coming back to what I mentioned earlier, if you just overhear a conversation, someone is not directly telling you about an incident, you are not mandated to report that. So these are the exceptions. Any questions about these? So this is where we start to come back to the support aspect. So yes, in mandated reporting, there is the, you know, nuts and bolts of submitting the actual incident report. But we also encourage checking on that person, right? There's still the human part of that. Checking on the person who disclosed, if they disclosed directly to you. Acknowledge what was said or observed if you observed it. And then offer assistance in obtaining supportive measures and/or filing a report if that's something that they wish to do themselves. If you are the person who experienced harassment or discrimination and wished to report, but would like support in doing so, you may disclose to a mandated reporter who can assist, who can report either on their own or assist you in reporting. And this was actually a question, so let's say someone comes to you and they want to report something and they just want someone else to be with them while they're reporting it. You can do that. Your name will still need to be attached to a report. So you would be obligated to then separately report, and it seems like a duplication, but that is to ensure, again, that you individually fulfilled that obligation or met that obligation. So that's my understanding based on our conversations with Jane Cassidy. How do you submit a report? So we're going to go over some different options. The first option would be online at lsu.edu/support. This is an image of the website. If you haven't visited this website yet, I do encourage you just to go look at it, get familiar with it. So one of the options that you can see in the boxes at the bottom of the screen is Report an Incident. So you would click on the Report an Incident link. It would bring you to these two options, either student reporting or employee reporting. So these are two separate incident report forms. How do you know which one to choose? So you would select the student reporting option if a student has reported something to you that they've directly experienced, or when someone is reporting or disclosing to you an incident that involves a student. So if a student has been impacted, is the victim or survivor, you would report as student reporting. You would choose employee reporting if the person who's been impacted is an employee, if they were the person directly experiencing that.
Ma'am, let me ask you a quick one. When you said about the, if you're at a speak-out and you hear somebody, what if you're talking to somebody with their parents at a dinner party and the kids are there and one of the daughters says, this has happened, the parents know about it, they're in the system, and even been to the sheriff or the police? Would I still be obligated to file a report?
So my understanding is that you would if you directly received that disclosure, even if you weren't in your official, you know-
Well, I'm on the board, I'm a board member whether I'm in this room or not.
Right.
So I'm at a dinner party with child and the parents, and they're in the system, they're going to court and all of this stuff, I hear about it, I got to still then go file the report?
You mean if it's already being investigated?
She's told us, she's been to the Title IX Office, she's meeting this, she's being counseled. All of these things are going on.
I hear you.
First time I hear about it. Now I have to report?
So, yes. And this is actually something that, for instance, you know, at STAR, we have been mandated reporters by general law, mandated reporters of child abuse, elder abuse, things like that. So no matter what, even if someone comes to us and it's already been reported and they're already involved, our staff who are working with that individual are still mandated to report it if it falls under that obligation. So it seems to, again, be a lot of duplication, seems to be, you know, a little frustrating for that reason, but the purpose is that, you know, these laws around mandated reporting are written to hold individuals accountable because what has happened in the past is people looking at other people and thinking, oh, that person reported, so I don't need to, or I think that person's reporting, or maybe someone else will report, so I don't have to. So that's why the law is, these laws are written the way they are. Even if it seems kind of ridiculous for some reason, it's still a way of meeting your own obligation as a mandated reporter. So in addition to reporting through the website, lsu.edu/support, there's also a reporting option through the LSU mobile app. And so selecting LSU mobile, there is a survivor support icon. They call it the Hands Around the Heart icon is what it looks like. And that will take the user to an online reporting form through the app. So that is another way that individuals can submit an incident report. And then just, yes.
I have a question.
Please.
So does this mobile app include a student from any LSU location?
LSU system? You mean like-
Yes, so I represent the UNIS campus.
It's my understanding that it does.
I'm assuming that it goes directly in, but I mean, what we need to do is obviously share that with our students and create links to-
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then coming back to, so these last few bullets, send an email to Title IX, call the Title IX Office, visit the Title IX Office. This is not, an incident report still needs to be filed, but again, we encourage all of you to directly contact the Title IX Office if you have any questions about reporting, if you have any uncertainties about it, and to receive guidance, for that matter. Yeah, so this is just kind of reiterating at this point what I've already said. But again, if you have any questions, if you think you may have become aware of a potential violation, if you think you may be required to mandate a report but aren't sure, we do encourage you to contact the Title IX Office. And it's important to note that lack of awareness of one's mandated reporter status does not protect a person in the event that they neglect to report and it later comes to be found out and there's action taken. So that's, again, why this training piece is so important for every, everyone who falls under this mandated reporter category. We want people to be informed about their obligations. And so coming back to these additional obligations, when responding if someone has disclosed directly to you, so you should directly inform that individual of your status as a mandated reporter. And this says, or confidential resource, this is again pulled from the training, but you are mandated reporters. You should protect that student or employee confidentiality to the extent possible- You should protect this, that student or employee confidentiality to the extent possible. So coming back to, you may be mandated to submit an incident report, however, that does not mean it's okay to go around telling everyone, you know, going home and telling people about the details of, of what you heard. So still protecting confidentiality to the extent possible. And then providing contact information for reporting options and for on and off-campus resources for victims or survivors. And again, this, going back to that lsu.edu/support page, it has the reporting, the incident form link. It also has access or, you know, a link to list of resources for these on and off-campus options.
All right, I have a question. So a situation, for example, if you encounter, kind of like Jay's example, where you're, you're somewhere hanging out with a family, they may not realize that you are a mandatory reporter, bring it up to you in what they think is confidence, and when you say, because it says, "Look, I have," you turn to this family and say, "Look, I am a mandatory reporter. I now have to report this." And the student that says, "Don't, I don't want to do this, I want to, you know, I want my identity confidential, I don't want you to do that, I want to remain anonymous."
Yeah.
What, what's the, what's the situation? What's, how do we balance that then? There's a mandatory reporting obligation and there's an obligation to, to protect the confidentiality, so, so what do we do?
Sure, that's a great question. So one of the things that we make a practice of at STAR is informing, like especially if, if minors are contacting us, we inform them of that obligation. We actually have our legal team, which as attorneys, they are not mandated reporters, so we have a way of referring to attorneys if someone is really concerned about, you know, they don't want something mandated reported to law enforcement or DCFS. In this setting, or in this case, you know, it's something that, for instance, professors could say upfront to students, right? Or it's something that, and the more we talk about this, hopefully the more informed people can become about, "This is, this is my role." So one thing you could do is if someone starts disclosing something to you that you think it's like, "Okay, this sounds like it may be a mandated reported situation," you could stop them and say, "Look, you know, I want to be here for you, I want to support you, I want to let you know that I am a mandated reporter and that's what this means. And, you know, again, I want to be supportive to you, but I also want to make sure you have the power and that you're informed about that. If you would prefer, I can connect you with some supportive resources who are confidential resources." Right? And so that may be a little tricky of a conversation to have, but that is an option so that you're taking into consideration, you know, what do they want, what will make them feel most informed and empowered? Does that help?
Thank you.
Great question. Thank you. Okay. And so then just to wrap up this particular section, again, talking about mandated reporting, mandated reporters are only required to report sex and gender-based harassment or discrimination, but you still have the option to report other civil rights violations that fall outside of that legal duty. So again, just kind of coming back to, to there's mandated reporting and then there's this concept of optional reporting. So other forms of harassment or discrimination may be based on race or ethnicity, nationality, age, marital status, genetic predisposition, religion, veteran status, or disability and/or disability. So this is coming back to that broader civil rights focus as well. And at this point, we are going to move into more specific presentation on the types and continuum of power-based violence. So any, any further questions about mandated reporting before we move on? Not that you can't ask them later, but... So first a note on terminology again. Why, why do we call this or refer to this as power-based violence? It is referred, we refer to it this way because where we typically see this violence is within a context of interpersonal and/or institutional power imbalances, meaning in situations where there's unequal access to power. And what does this mean? So we see that power comes in many forms. So personal power can be a variety, it can be a variety of forms of power, just to kind of pull up my notes to give some examples. So when we see personal power, this could include the ability to act, speak, or have control over one's body and behaviors. Interpersonal power imbalances can include, or power can include the ability to control or influence other people to act or behave in a certain way. Power can be used in harmful ways against someone, it can also be used in helpful ways to advocate for someone, assist them, or empower them. Social power, this includes being viewed as credible. So when we see someone reporting, someone denying, who is seen as more credible? That is a form of power, social power. So being viewed as credible, believable, knowledgeable, and valuable to the institution, these are all forms of social power. It includes having one's concerns heard, validated, and addressed, and it can include having close relationships with other people in positions of power. So what about institutional power? This includes the authority to make and enact decisions that impact other people on a, on a wide, wide scale, to shape the culture of a community or institution. And going back to these interpersonal power imbalances, we can look at power imbalances based on age, gender, race, a person's level of conscience or empathy. Someone who lacks empathy for others may have more power than another person who is highly empathetic, and that may be used against that person that has greater empathy. A person's position in a company or organization, a person's fame, wealth, popularity, their reputation, whether it's a good reputation, they're seen as, you know, very helpful and this and that, and we can't imagine that they would engage in these types of behaviors that they're being accused of. Mental or physical health status, ability or disability, and physical strength. I think a lot of times when we talk about power interpersonally, we think of the physical, but that is only one, one form of power. There are many other forms. So what we see is that people who choose to harass, discriminate, or commit violence against people, they typically harm victims with less power. They choose people that they know are more vulnerable, they choose people who they know are less likely to be believed if they do say something about it. So we have to keep this in mind when we're considering the dynamics of things when we're receiving disclosures, or when we're hearing about them, hearing about disclosures. So yes, again, as this slide says, the perpetrator or offender's greater power allows them to commit that abuse or violence in the first place, and then if they deny having done so, that power allows them to be believed more so than their victim. And this comes back to why fair, unbiased, thorough investigations are so important, and why the, the initial reporting is done whether or not you personally believe that the disclosure is true. So coming back to actually institutional risks for power-based violence. So we see that institutions or organizations with, where there's a hierarchy of value or worth of individuals within that institution, that institution is actually at a greater risk of power-based violence occurring. So I'm not coming in here and suggesting that, you know, we make everything completely non-hierarchical. I'm not saying that's the solution, but it is important to think about when we are talking about an institution as vast as the LSU system. A company or organization that has a large range of positions and compensation levels is at a higher risk. And, you know, one of the things we've heard repeatedly, and I know that Tanya has seen in her previous work in academia, is, okay, you're going to see tenured faculty with much more freedom to speak, much more power to speak than junior faculty, right? And so that is a very concrete example of how this can play out. And so if someone at a lower level makes an accusation of someone at a higher level, someone who is the star, right, the superstar, who's getting all the grant funding in, right, that does become a challenge for the institution when they perceive the individual being accused has so much value or brings so much value, especially economic value, to the institution. In reality, with quote-unquote superstar harassers are, are a risk, and they can cost an institution more than they, than they bring in ultimately, over the long term. So those are just some things to consider when we're talking about this concept of power-based violence. So in whatever ways that are possible, acknowledging, addressing, and minimizing power imbalances is critical to preventing violence in the first place and ensuring effective and supportive And at this time, just checking the time, I'm going to go through this a little bit, try to go through this somewhat quickly to catch up a little bit. So this is the continuum, different forms of power-based violence that were referenced earlier. Just going to go over some, some quick examples, and I apologize for having to rush through this part. So sex or gender-based discrimination or harassment, what are some specific examples of this? So this could include making comments about a person's appearance, dress, or mannerisms that connect to their gender, gender identity, et cetera. Making insulting comments about someone's gender identity, sexual orientation, even asking about someone's sexual orientation. Failure to treat individuals consistent with their gender identity. Telling lewd jokes or sharing stories about sexual experiences. These are not comprehensive lists, again, they are some examples. Repeatedly asking someone for dates despite being turned down. Asking for sexual favors. Making sexually offensive gestures, remarks, or facial expressions. Sending unwanted suggestive or lewd emails, letters, or other communications. So some of these, you know, we've probably been talking about for the last 50 years, and some of them may be a little bit newer. Non-consensual disclosure of sexual images. This can include taking nude, partially nude, or sexually explicit photos or videos of a person without their consent. Consent is a huge issue, right? It's a very important factor when we're talking about whether something is a violation, something is violence, or whether it's not. Sharing a nude or partially nude photo or sexually explicit video without the individual's consent. And I just want to point out, in our society, a lot of times when we look at this issue, we go to that preventing victimization mode. Don't allow someone to take pictures of you this way, right? Well, someone's not always consenting to that image being taken in the first place, but even if they have consented to that, they have not necessarily consented to that image being shared. So that is an example of how we can shift the conversation back to preventing perpetration. How often are we educating to not take these pictures without consent and to not share them without a person's consent?
Can I ask a quick question on that? I know we're trying to move along, but to clarify on consent.
Yes.
I'm beginning to see messages, billboards out there reminding the general public that anyone who is incapacitated even slightly is not giving consent. Could you just drill down on that for just a moment about, because we're dealing with a college population who enjoys their social life, and so that we are all clear and we can communicate the message effectively on what consent is, and that if someone is impaired, what that means if they, you know, if the perpetrator thinks they've given consent?
Yes, so in this instance, first, that is another perfect example of shifting that conversation from preventing victimization to preventing perpetration. We talk a lot about the connection between excessive consumption of alcohol and becoming a victim of sexual assault. There is also a link between excessive consumption of alcohol and perpetration of sexual assault. So that is really the link that's most important to focus on, especially because a common behavior among offenders is to feed someone alcohol to render them more vulnerable to sexual assault. So there is a lot to be said. We actually do a whole training on the connections and intersections between alcohol and sexual violence. But yes, to your question, to your point, when an individual is slurring their words, when they are, you know, vomiting from having consumed so much alcohol, when they are, you know, stumbling physically and having difficulty walking, and especially if they are passed out unresponsive, you know, unable to coherently communicate or react to things, these are, this is all evidence of incapacitation. And so yes, someone may commit sexual assault while they're drunk, but we all know that a person who is driving drunk can still be held accountable for that crime, and it's the same with sexual assault. So a lot of times people look at these and say, "Oh, they were both drinking, it was just a misunderstanding, this communication." Usually what we see is there's dynamics where one individual intentionally used alcohol or another drug to render that other individual more vulnerable, and they took advantage of that.
So say a young woman smokes a joint, loses some of her inhibitions. As we see the billboards that say, you know, buzz driving is drunk driving, you know, that, we talk about this in terms of alcohol, then we jump to like very severe impairment with drugs that are in a much stronger category, but let's talk about marijuana that's becoming more and more accessible. Someone smokes a little bit, loses their inhibitions, we need to begin communicating that as well, that, that still, just because someone's feeling loose and good doesn't mean that they're consenting to this. And the perpetrators need to understand, we need to communicate this message.
Yeah, and what I would say is absolutely we can look at sort of a continuum of sobriety, intoxication, incapacitation, from a promotion of health, healthier behaviors, we would absolutely advocate engaging in sexual activity when sober. However, at the same time, we recognize, and this is where we come back to looking at college-age individuals, a lot of times alcohol and other drugs are used as a social lubricant to feel more comfortable with certain things or to engage in certain activities because we don't have the tools to address that head-on, talk about it openly, right? Young people are not given the tools. And so then they rely on these things, and it can create gray areas. And so I absolutely think when it comes back to prevention, this is a really important conversation to have, but not from a shaming, if, you know, because again, a lot of individuals who've been assaulted while they were drunk, incapacitated, there's an immense shame because the societal messaging has been, "You made yourself vulnerable and you were at fault." We need to shift that.
Thank you for addressing.
Thank you.
I, I got a quick question, just, and you got to go back a couple of slides, but I found it on, on the thing. It's about repeatedly asking for dates despite being rebuffed. You go down, it says, "Making sexually offensive gestures, remarks, or facial expressions." This is extremely important class we're having. But do we get down in the weeds on some of these things that maybe it, I, I, I just don't understand why you, you, I know you're trying to cover the whole gambit of things, but it gets down to where it's, you know, I don't want to call it ridiculous, but it's, because it's not, but I think that's facial expressions? I mean, is that, how would you, where, where would that fall into if you, you make facial expressions at someone in a bar that you're trying to ask out? Are you, now you're criminal?
So when we are talking about prevention of sexual violence, we are looking at a broad continuum, and that can include non-consensual comments, that can include, and so we do have to address because sexual harassment is not just physical. It can include these images that are sexually suggestive, and when we're talking about facial gestures, it's not a facial gesture of, "I'm smiling at you and, you know, expressing interest." It's typically something that is directly, you know, sexually suggestive in a way that is not consensual to that other individual. So I, you know...
No, I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
I mean, I am feeling under the gun because I know we just have a few more minutes.
Okay, go ahead. I'm, I'm just, you almost like you can't even tell anybody good morning anymore, hello?
You can, you can say good morning.
Oh, that's good.
That's not on the list, right?
Okay. You can't smile at him, though.
You could, you could smile.
All right, okay.
Good morning. But I hear you, maybe that's a follow-up conversation we can have. Cyber socking and stalking, so this could be repeated unwanted contact or threatening behavior that causes fear or safety concerns. Unwanted phone calls, unwanted emails, texts, other types of messages. Typically, when we're talking about stalking, we're talking about a pattern of behavior. Leaving strange or potentially threatening items for the victim, watching, following, or tracking an individual online or in person, showing up to places uninvited to see the person, giving inappropriate and unwanted gifts. So, again, a lot of this coming back to consent, mutuality, right? Are these things mutually wanted or not? Sexual battery and sexual assault. This includes non-consensual sexual touching, kissing, other types of contact. This includes non-consensual groping, again, this non-consensual language. Using force, intimidation, and/or coercion to engage in non-consensual sexual activity. Non-consensual penetration, and as was previously asked about and mentioned, engaging in sexual activity with someone who is incapacitated. Dating and domestic violence, we see this as a pattern of control, isolation, so it's not just physical, there's a broader pattern of behavior that is present in most situations of domestic violence. Then we have the physical violence, sexual assault absolutely frequently occurs within the context of domestic violence. Withholding economic resources, stealing from or defrauding their partner. Withholding physical resources, preventing that spouse or intimate partner from working. Other violence or threats of violence, threatening to take children away. And as we have seen far too much in our state for a long time, but especially recently, murder and death is what it can escalate to. Sex trafficking and sexual slavery includes putting limitations on one's autonomy, the freedom of movement, and selling someone for sex, using someone as a sexual slave. So, this would be at the far end of the continuum. We have two more minutes, I apologize, Tanya, but just wanna go over some impacts.
Yeah, so, we wanna wrap up with some impacts of power-based violence. So, if you can see here, we start with thinking about the individual and how that then affects their relationships with their family, their friends, their partner even, and how that then can later impact their community and their society, our society as a whole. So, if you think about this on a college campus and what this might look like, is you might have a student who's been, you know, assaulted in some capacity. They will then start to have strained relationships, this is a common outcome, they might lose trust with people that they are close to, they might shut down, you know, communication lines between them and their families might suffer. This can impact even just their peers in their classroom, and then their department as a whole. So, you might start to see this kind of loss of connection between that student and their department and our campus as a whole, and we all know that every student on campus matters and has something to offer their peers, their faculty, the staff here as well. And so, we start to see this decline between trust between the student and the institution as a whole, and considering how important LSU, for example, is to the state of Louisiana, we can start to see this lack of trust between Louisiana communities and students and our whole campus across the state, so.
I ask a quick question, do you have any statistics on the numbers of students who drop out, withdraw, who've been victims of sexual assault, whether reported or unreported? Do y'all have a statistic on that? I think it's probably very dramatic.
So, according to national standards, about 13% of students at some point in their college career are impacted by sexual assault and sexual violence. So, if we look at Baton Rouge campus by itself, that's nearly 4,000 students, if we're looking at the new number for this year, which is 34,000, I believe, right? So, that is one number I can offer you right now, that you might, right now, have 4,000 students on campus who either will be or have been affected by sexual assault and sexual violence.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, ladies, please don't rush to the end of this.
Okay.
This is very important.
Thank you.
The amount of time this board has spent on other topics, we can spend five extra minutes on this today, Mr. Chairman, if I can be so bold, but this is extremely important, it's important to our community, your time is very valuable, and you have the captive audience, we need to complete this to the best of, you know, use of our time.
I appreciate that, thank you. And I do wanna spend some time talking about how prevention is, okay, can't get it to change. Okay. There we go. I wanna talk about how prevention is cost-effective. We cannot, I think we all know this, we cannot quantify emotional costs, but with, along with the CDC, we can actually quantify the cost of violence. So, with a student, coming back to a student, for example, some of the negative impacts that we're gonna see, and I did see this as a higher ed professional myself, negative impacts on academic work, there, as we were just talking about this, kind of dropping out of school tendency, and there's the situation in between all of that, where there's like a steady decline in academic performance, this pullback from the university itself, the pullback from the departments, from faculty, from peers on campus, and the long-term impact for the individual is this damage to career and earning potential. So, having one student decline academically might not seem like a big deal in the moment, I'm not sure, it is to me, but the long-term for that individual is severe, and we all know that that first job right out of college really does shape their entire career and how they can move forward from there, so this is a really important impact to think about for students. And then there's just general financial costs caused by violence. I always come back to this point that prevention is cost-effective, violence is one of the most expensive, you know, things in this country that we are actually having to deal with, and I will give you some numbers on that. So, the economic impact of rape and sexual assault is estimated to 122,000 per victim. So, right now, with over 25 million survivors in the US, so this is over their lifetime, 122,000, so with 25 million survivors right now in the US, we are expected as a country to pay over $3 trillion in their lifetimes. That's, I'm gonna say that again, $3 trillion in their lifetimes, and about one-third is federally, is a federal expense. Okay, so, the impact on the LSU community, what we start to see when one student gets impacted by violence is not only a concern for that one individual, but this idea of collective safety. I actually had a student come to me, an LSU student come to me like last week or so, and asked, what is it that students can do to stay safe on campus? And so, this, I think, is a really important conversation to have to support prevention practices moving forward. There becomes, with one student getting impacted, increased anxiety amongst the whole campus, and this kind of impact of toxic stress for the most at-risk for that violence. So, this concern for personal safety that that one student might experience after experiencing violence does trickle out to the entire campus eventually. So, the economic costs of victim-survivor recovery include emergency medical services, crisis and mental health service fees, lost contributions of individuals affected by power-based violence, we start to see legal expenses, we start to, like I mentioned, the loss of earning potential also is something to think about in terms of our economy as well. And one of the institutional costs is investigation, so investigation itself is much more expensive than prevention costs, so I think, and it's more proactive and it provides more accountability systems as well. The time and energy to respond to and develop prevention strategies to power-based violence, so I think it's better to put our funds in prevention strategies and our energy in prevention strategies than having to focus our time on, you know, being kind of reactive to moments of violence. And I think coming back to something we discussed earlier with institutional courage and institutional betrayal, that also becomes a severe impact for the LSU community. So, that disconnect that a student might experience with LSU and LSU community turns into this kind of feeling of institutional betrayal, and that is something that can be hard to get over, and also what starts to happen is a sort of loss of pride in one's campus and their education, or maybe even in their athletic experiences as well. So, we definitely support LSU president and thinking more towards prevention, and are here to support LSU in taking that, taking the steps towards focusing on prevention. So, if we have any other questions right now, we'd be happy to.
I have a quick question.
Answer.
I'm from South Louisiana, and I know a lot of people, when they greet somebody in the morning. Good morning, darling. Is that a form of sexual harassment?
It can be, honestly, it can be. Does it have to be? No. And I know that sounds hard to hear, 'cause it is part of our culture in Louisiana.
Right.
But, yeah, it can be if you put your hand on the lower person, the back, lower back of that person, it can be on, you know, your proximity to that person, are you invading their personal space? Yeah, it can definitely be that, it doesn't have to be.
How about if you're on the telephone, and they call you or something, you say, good morning, darling? Is that, that can't be sexual harassment.
No, that, I would say that that cannot necessarily fall directly under sexual harassment, but I think in terms of thinking towards gender equity, right, it would kind of invite the question of, do we say that to everyone we speak to on the phone?
Good.
Yeah.
Would the relationship of the person also not play into it? Mr. Morris says, good morning, darling, to me. We are equals in our service here, equals in our position, however, if it's used with, and not in Mr. Morris's case, but in the case of a superior to a lower-ranking employee, could then it be considered harassing or a power-based comment?
Yes, I think you're performing a, you're performing power in that moment, right? And that is something that we want to move away from at all times, whether it's in the, you know, in the morning, and it's, you know, you're just innocently saying hi, good morning, you know, yes, I think it is important to always be hyper-aware of your power relationship to the people you're speaking with and connecting with on campus and outside of that as well.
Doesn't that also come back to intent of that comment?
So, the question was, does it come back to the intent of that comment? So, I think it is important to realize that even somebody who does not have the intent can be held accountable for their actions, right? And so, we're not always, and again, this is moving towards gender equity, this is moving towards prevention logic, in which we wanna be thinking more about not the potential perpetrator here, but the potential survivor here.
And just to add on to that, I think this also comes back to the conversation around what is consensual and what is not. So, if you have that relationship with someone, and they actually say, no, I love it when you call me that, and we're on equal footing, that is, I think, still an option. So much of this comes back to, if we're making certain comments without even thinking that through, without considering how that may be received, or the power differential that that may help maintain, that is when it becomes problematic. So, that's just to kind of add on, I think, to what Tanya has said.
Yeah, and I think also, you know, even between colleagues, that if it is something you like, I think being in a power position, you also wanna set a good example on campus of practicing forms of gender equity, practicing forms of mutual respect as well, so that people can, you know, go back into their classrooms and kind of maybe even mimic your actions. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. So, when I hug Ms. Torres and kiss her on her forehead, and Mr. Morris witnesses this in the coffee room. Mr. Morris has a responsibility to make a report? Does Ms., I'm asking, you wanna ask the question again? Ms. Torres, she's in the coffee room. I walk in, good morning, I don't say good morning, or maybe I say good morning, I put my arm around her shoulder and I kiss her on her forehead, and Mr. Morris witnesses this. Does he have a responsibility to make this, make a report? And if, how does all that play out? Does Ms. Torres say, I'm, there's nothing wrong with colla, I like collars, hugging me and talking to me?
That's consensual.
So, that's consensual?
Yes, so, coming back to the question of, thank you, I think the important.
But, 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 Mr. Morris doesn't know if it's consensual, he just witnesses this, and he decides to make some report, and so where do we go?
So, he could make the choice to make the, make the report, and it can be investigated, and nothing can come of it, right? So, we did kind of review the fact that reports can be made, and it doesn't necessarily mean that something will amount to a Title IX offense or P-73 offense. So, my understanding, though, is that the two of you are equal, and there is a kind of mutual understanding between everyone here. So, I don't think that necessarily, you know, looking at mandated reporting as something that can take away from building strong relationships between you and your coworkers, but rather to understand how you can strengthen the community at LSU and Louisiana as a whole, right? So, we want to encourage strong relationships that can build a better, safer campus as well.
Ms. Marshafala, Dr. Rawl, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For coming and being with us today. Supervisors, you have this form, I would ask if you sign it, and Dr. Drotte collected. Without objection, we'll recess for 10 minutes, no more than 10 minutes, and come back and conclude our business.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much.
Oh, my.
Chair, notice the quorum. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the September 10th, 2021 board meeting. I need a motion to approve the minute. Supervisor Mallett has-
Second.
Moved. Supervisor Dampf has seconded. Without objection, the minutes are approved. Next item, personnel actions requiring board approval. These actions are previously provided to all the supervisors. They're in the materials. I would like one englobo motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Mallett, second by Supervisor Flossman. Without objection, personnel actions are approved. The next item is reports to the board. There are three kinds here. A Fall 2021 Fourteenth Day Enrollment and Trend Report, a Facility Summary Report, and Quarterly Report on Pharmacy Benefit Manager. All of these reports have been previously provided. They're in the packet. I would entertain one motion, englobo motion to approve these reports to the board.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Werner, second by Supervisor Dampf. Without objection, these reports are approved. The next item are reports from faculty advisors and staff advisors. I believe we have faculty advisor here. Professor Lopez?
Yes.
Good to see you.
Well, good morning. I understand that reports of my resignation have been greatly exaggerated. Here I am this morning and thank you for having us. All right, the Council of Faculty Advisors met for this, for the first time in almost two years this morning. We elected officers. I, Mandy Lopez, from LSU Baton Rouge, will serve as chair. Professor Sanjay Kombhaj will serve as vice chair and Professor Owen Carmichael will serve as the recorder. I'd like those representatives of the Faculty Council of Advisors that are here today to introduce themselves, if you'll allow me to.
Absolutely. Please stand up and be recognized.
Hi, welcome, everyone. I'm Dr. Kester Stumpf from LSU. I'm a volunteer.
Agent Morrow, LSU.
Joseph J. Anderson.
Owen Carmichael, Pennington, Blackwell.
Pennington, LSU. House Report.
Sanjay Ambroge from LSU Health, New Orleans.
Outstanding. Thank you very much for being here and participating. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we did meet and generate the Council of Faculty Advisors' report this morning and put forth the following items. The faculty request that the Board of Supervisors publicly clarify the recent proposed revisions to the Board of Supervisors bylaws that reference faculty governance. Clearly, there's been a lot of misunderstanding and dispute over these changes, so some public clarification is in order for all of our campuses as it does apply to all of them. Next, the faculty put forth that there is a rather extraordinary amount, or perhaps not extraordinary, but a large amount of acting administrative leaders of three campuses, meaning the chancellors of both health centers and the VP of the Ag Center. And the question, do, the faculty do question a bit the accountable, accountability of such high-level interims. They ask transparency in formation of the search committees and appropriate faculty and staff representation on those committees. Next, the faculty appreciate the recent raises but insist at a minimum annual cost of living raises. Further, the faculty are concerned about the disproportionate growth of administrative positions, especially at the dean level and up. There's some indication that the raises are also disproportionate in favor of upper administration over faculty. This leads to the next item, which is salary compression and inversion continues to be a serious problem. We request that this be, that this situation be investigated and resolved. Finally, a faculty request of periodic evaluation of upper administrators from the dean level up and that the results be shared publicly. This concludes my reports, report. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Mallett?
I have a request. I would like to meet with the faculty and see if we can't work together to help y'all get some raises. I expressed that to Ms. Torres yesterday, that if we got together and went to the legislature, possibly we could ask and maybe get some more funding to accommodate that. Do you think that's possible?
I believe that is absolutely possible and we'll look forward to that interaction. Now that the council has reconvened, we, we can certainly arrange to, to meet at your leisure or at the next Board of Supervisors meeting, whichever will work. Some do travel from great distances, so we do want to get sufficient advance notice, but I, is there any? Oh, yeah, looks like we're all in agreement.
The, the second thing, I, at the last meeting, some, someone specifically, Mr. Mann, said he thought I was offensive in my questions to you. If I offended you, I apologize. I didn't think I was. And I'd like to, on the record, to, to make that quite clear. On the issue of pay, I was criticized. I want to make it clear that we knew what we were getting paid and we took this job and we took it, every one of us at this board. All we ask is a little bit of respect. I don't think anybody here on this board wants any money. We love LSU. If we didn't, we wouldn't be up here. We spend a lot of time. And I really would like to forge some type of, of relationship with the, the faculty in working together and what we agree on, let's work together. What we don't disagree on, or we, we do disagree on or don't disagree on, we have to agree to disagree there, not come after us. We'll get a lot more accomplished. Everything you've requested today, I think that the, the chair and the, the board will work diligently to do that because some of the stuff that you've raised concerns, I, I would like to get to the bottom of that, too. Other than that, it's nice to see you again.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mallett. I appreciate that.
Professor Lopez, it was a pleasure to meet with you and your colleagues this morning and I look forward to working with you and hearing your concerns as they come up. We're always available to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was told that we do not have a representative of staff advisors here. Is that, can I confirm that? Well, I'm sure we'll hear from them as appropriate. The next item on the agenda is the president's report. Mr. President?
I would be negligent if I did not acknowledge what my faculty colleagues requested. I do believe that we have a salary problem. If we benchmarked our salaries against any relative competitors, I think we would fall in a way that would not be consistent with where we should be. I also want to acknowledge several visits that affirm that over the last, since the last meeting, I've visited with colleagues in engineering and science, doing very, very good work, as well as our River Center. And yesterday, thanks, thankful to the chair for organizing schools of veterinary medicine and we saw a presentation by Pennington. And what I have consistently said in my first 100-plus days here is that we have outstanding faculty who do very, very good work in terms of in the classroom and in terms of their scholarship, including our representative, Professor Lopez, who is an outstanding researcher herself. However, I'm deeply concerned that our compensation and the physical infrastructure is inconsistent with the quality of the individuals who have to work in it. And so we really need to be strategic about how we allocate our resources to make sure both our physical infrastructure, as well as the individuals who are doing an outstanding job, are compensated appropriately. I concur with you. With respect to accountability of leaders in interim roles, they fully know that they are accountable, trust me. And we will be very transparent in terms of the search processes that are associated with filling those roles, as well as ensuring that faculty and staff are represented in ways that I think are most appropriate for searches at these levels. Would like to say a couple of things- Would like to say a couple of things, really try to capture a bit of imagination, but I don't want to appear to be too strident in my remarks. In my observations over the last hundred-plus days, I've had a chance, I'm an epidemiologist, to look at some of the epidemiology related to the state of Louisiana, and the things that I see have brought me great distress. If we have a state that is fifth highest in terms of cancer incident and death rates, it strikes me that LSU's system, as a flagship system of this state, must knit together its assets in such a way that we are attacking the problem of cancer with full force. I have heard, you know, a lot of talk about NCI designation, and thankful to you, sir, for taking us to Kentucky and observing the NCI center at the University of Kentucky. While that is a destination goal, to be a NCI-designated environment here at LSU, it is my opinion that no matter what designation or not, we must, in a determined fashion, knit together our assets related to cancer and attack this problem for the people of the state of Louisiana. And anything short of that, with respect to our efforts, is not something I could tolerate as president of this institution and as epidemiologist. And so, in my opinion, our foundational efforts have to happen across our institution, and we are going to march forward to partner with whoever and whatever institutions want to attack and eradicate cancer in the state of Louisiana. Prevention, we talked, we talked about it just now in our Title IX conversation. Prevention of cancer is extremely important, as well as being able to intervene in appropriate ways, as well as the care. I think it is foundational for us to do that, and we will be known five years from now whether or not we got that done. With respect to other areas in the science and research agenda, I see the same problem space. We took a visit to the River Center. They put up a GIS slide of the state of Louisiana, and you can see in transparent fashion the erosion that's happening on the coast. It is really very clear, if we're going to be serious about protecting the people of this state and securing our future, that our efforts related to the coast and ocean have to be doubled down on. The beauty of our situation is we have almost three hundred researchers today working in that space, but just like our cancer problem, they too need to be knit together in such a way that they partner with our government, both federal and state, to secure our coast. We have to handle our biomedical front, and we must handle our front on the coast and the ocean. In a related matter, as our land is eroding and we think of ourselves as a land-grant institution, there is nothing more foundational than agriculture. And as I see it, the nexus of ocean, coast, and agriculture must become foundational to what we do here at LSU. We must be determined on this front. And I think, quite frankly, after reading the history of LSU, that our agricultural situation has deviated from its historical roots. Please let me help you understand what I mean. If you look at the history of LSU, they said that Ag should be integrated into all that we do at this institution. When they went out and did benchmarking back in the nineteen twenties, that was the charge. I do not see that today as leader of this institution. I see some integration, but not the way it needs to be in order for us to be successful. I am determined to make that happen. And from my perspective as a scientist, I think we must raise the level of biotechnology research that happens in our agricultural research, if we're going to be, impact parish by parish, all sixty-four. They are integrated in many respects to what we do in ocean and what we do in biomedical. If we have that biotechnology hub growing, together with the work in the ocean and coast and environment, with our biotechnology efforts, biomedical efforts related to cancer, we are going to be moving in a flagship way. We have some tremendous assets that really need to be knit together in ways that are quite different than they are today. All of this, in my mind, helps create a secure Louisiana. But there are other things we have to be secure, and, and it's related to something that the chair has talked about. He's mentioned our history many times related to ROTC and wanting to have a ROTC corpse that is a modern version of what we had in the past. In my opinion, we must be elite in security studies. Cyber being foundational. If we're going to do great work in biotechnology, you have to secure it. People want to steal your ideas. They will take them from you and keep us from actually innovating and expanding our business sector. Our security efforts must be elite. We met with those folks since our last board meeting. They told me the top programs in cybersecurity in the country, and I smiled. The reason I did is because every place they named, I am a hundred percent confident we can benchmark them and be better. Not even a doubt in my mind. And so, we are going to march in that way. And then finally, this state is known for energy, and we find ourselves also in a need for alternative energy. It is something that we must pay attention to. Everything is dependent upon it, and I think it's an area that we have to double down in on our research. We're doing a great job in it. I want to make one thing clear. In each one of these areas, there are shining stars. Our goal is to increase the density of those stars, so they will actually be impactful in ways that are very unique. It is a system-wide and collective effort. It has to happen and manifest itself. I'm excited to engage in it. On the science and research side, expect these to be priorities of this administration going forward. This is about securing our future. I have not talked to you about preserving our past and protecting our heritage. That's a forthcoming conversation that I would like to have after further exploration of our assets here in the LSU system. But right now, I'm looking to the future and look forward to working with each of you to make sure that we have a right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item on the agenda is the approval of committee recommendations. Chair will entertain one englobo motion to approve committee recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Mallett, second by Supervisor Williams, without objection. Those recommendations are approved. And I would note the accusation of Supervisor Woods relative to one of the committees. The next item is the chair's report. I would like to begin by, by echoing and endorsing President Tate's remarks. Very grateful for his, grateful for his leadership. I'm enormously proud to serve as the chair of the Board of Supervisors. I consider it the highest form of service to great institution. I began this meeting yesterday by talking about our land grant function. I'm glad to hear the president speak about that. We don't talk about it enough. It is a distinguishing feature of LSU from every other university in Louisiana. It also is coupled with our research functions, which, again, research is what we do. We, nothing can get in the way of our looking to the future and solving the problems of today and tomorrow by understanding how we got where we are. And that's where research comes in. We want to find new solutions to those problems, and maybe even the problems we haven't even foreseen. And nothing can get, can get in the way of that. I'm very proud that Dr. Tate's focused on that. And I'll say this. I'm also proud of the new committees that we reformed. One, to focus on research and Ag extension. I want to see a very vibrant agricultural extension service. It's how we touch all sixty-four parishes of Louisiana. And I would like to see extension increased exponentially. The services we provide, the ways we touch the citizens of Louisiana. I think that LSU and Louisiana are intertwined as part of the same fabric. Our fates are the same. And, you know, we've heard the numbers. For every one dollar invested by the state of Louisiana, it's a thirteen-dollar return. LSU is a, over a five-point-one-billion-dollar annual impact in Louisiana. I think that it's very important that we row in the same direction. And I look forward to working with Ag extension and ways to bring that message and that partnership with the entire citizenry in all of our parishes. I'm also very proud that enrollment at LSU is the highest it's ever been. People vote with their feet, and at a time nationally when enrollment has seen slight declines, LSU has seen historic gains. Undergraduate, graduate, people want to be here. They want to be LSU Tigers. This is where people want to be, and it's our responsibility to make it the best culture and environment for learning, to be safe, and to explore professions and vocations and change forces for their families, their communities, and the world. And we take those very, very seriously. I'd like to say that we're the largest class in entering freshman class and the largest enrollment LSU's ever had. We're also the most diverse LSU has ever been. And to dispute, the, the numbers dispute the false narrative that diversifying and giving opportunities to more people somehow is a negative impact on quality. The incoming freshman class is also the highest GPA and the highest standardized test scores LSU's ever admitted. So, the, the opposite is actually true. The more opportunities we give more people, the better quality of student we get and the better quality of education we're able to deliver to the entire LSU system. And I think the best, it's the best for LSU and the best for the state of Louisiana. Also, I'd like to conclude by making mention that the chancellor of the LSU Health Science Center in New Orleans has resigned. His name is Dr. Larry O'Yea. Dr. O'Yea was a man of immense, is a man of immense talents. He served as chancellor of the medical school since two thousand and six. Prior to that, he was a longstanding renowned vascular surgeon, first at LSU in nineteen seventy-five. He continued at the Mayo Clinic and other places throughout the world, where he demonstrated tremendous success. He returned home. He's a native of Cadya Parish, Crowley, Louisiana, but he returned in Louisiana to lead our medical school. And during a time of tremendous unrest after Katrina, he led the efforts to secure a ferry, a large boat from Europe that he parked in Baton Rouge, so that medical school could continue in Baton Rouge, housing students and faculty. He has, he grew fund balance over a hundred and twenty million over the last several years, and their fund balance today is in excess of two-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollars, an enormous sum of money. He's left the school in very good stead, and I look forward to seeing what the future of the medical school is in New Orleans and in Shreveport, and the collaborations between all of our research and medical entities as we go forward. And I would just like to thank Dr. O'Yea for his service. LSU, sir, is better off for it, so thank you. And with that, I would conclude my remarks. Thank you for being with us, and without objection, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, without objection. We are adjourned. Go Tigers.